Okay, folks, we're ready to get underway. We've got enough people here that we're gonna be moving along. And you know, we run a tight ship here on Schultz meetings days.
Ms. Smith is on her way.
Ms. Smith is on her way, and Ms. Dearnath Kofax is not gonna be here today? Okay. All right, so we're gonna start with work session number three, operational expectations. I don't think we have any more announcements. Who else are we missing? That's it? Okay. All right. All right, so before the presentation of the report by Mr. Plattenberg, I need a motion from someone I moved to accept. Moved to accept the facilities and transportation operational expectations report. Second, second from Sandy Evans. I went ahead and made it. Ms. Evans, seconded, and Mr. Plattenberg, the floor is yours for the report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schultz and the rest of the board members. Dr. Garza, what we're gonna be doing is really just briefly going through the executive summary for the facilities and transportation services operational expectations report. As you recall, we're migrating from this report. This report has become, may not appear that way, kind of a legacy movement, and we're gonna be more aligned with not only the strategic plan, but also with the portrait of a graduate. Before I get started, I'd like to recognize my staff that are in the audience. Ms. Jamie Gellner from transportation, Mr. Warren Jenkins, Mr. Mike Coughlin, Tom Vacarello, Amy Hollab, and Kevin Snead. Without this team, well, let's just put it this way, they make us look very good collectively. And again, with Susan Quinn allowing us the flexibility to operate within the environment that we handle, we're very fortunate to be working on behalf of the students and parents of Fairfax County Public Schools. But what I wanted to do is I want to go ahead and start about the facilities and transportation services O and E. As I said, I'm gonna briefly go through the summary because of the time that was allotted. I know that some of you had questions previously that you had asked. I'm sure there are many more that you have, and comments and so forth. I know Mr. Moon had asked a number of questions to get responses back regarding our report. The beginning of our report talks about the design, really environment, the collaborative environment. And if, I'll refer to, when we go through this, the actual associated corresponding document. It really is to provide, as it says on our page three, is clean, safe capacities that are utilized efficiently and effectively, that are adaptable, they're well-lit, and they're also sustainable. You'll go into, we'll talk about the CIP. The current surplus is really close to being expended by 2019. You'll see that in the detailed documentation. And we're building over approximately eighty classrooms a year. So actually, we're pacing pretty well, but depending on how our growth and what's gonna be in the upcoming CIP, it certainly is an opportunity or space that we need to continue to monitor. For those of you who may be looking at this document for the first time, the green, yellow, and red, it's much like a stoplight symbol that we've been using, and the red is really that things are untenable or unacceptable. What you'll find is that what I'm talking about currently are all in the green. Coming down through facilities and transportation, seeking out and incorporate practices and methods that are efficient and environmentally responsible. In the detailed report on page six, as part of our renovation program, we've planted over a thousand trees, nine hundred and fifty-nine seedlings, three thousand six hundred and five shrubs, twelve filtra, which are stormwater biofiltration programs, and fourteen stormwater management initiatives. Thirty percent, in fact, of our design and construction expenditures are in the area of sustainability measures, whether it's new mechanical, electrical, or white roofs to have light refraction and the like. We also get into our maintenance program and our landscape program, our greenhouse gas inventory on page nine. There's a really good link that links to a report that's provided. The current one isn't updated yet, but we have thirteen and years prior to that that really talks about what a greenhouse gas is, what the emissions are, what the measurements are, and things like refrigeration, the things like what we've done to reduce our electrical consumption and so forth. And it's a fifteen-page document that goes into a lot of the metrics or the measurable components associated with greenhouse gas emission. But suffice it to say, as it says here, our 2.27% increase in kilobat, kilo British thermal units per year from the prior year, really, that is reflective also of the additional square footage that we have in Fairfax County Public Schools. Continuously improving the methods for, by which our student enrollment projections are developed. As you recall, we're in the process of implementing a new system that we're hoping to have a little bit of parallel data for us this year, but then next year, what we're really looking at is really letting the, it kind of fly. It hasn't been without its opportunities, and you know I use the term challenges. We've certainly had that in the area of the new process that we're going through. But we're still, you know, as I said, Mr. Snead and Ms. Hollab have done an outstanding job, really, of keeping the train on the track, if you will, and moving to maintain our timeliness. The total cost of site that's referenced in the most current information about feasibility of sites for school construction includes such things as where the utilities are located, what type of egress and ingress patterns you have for traffic circulation, and so forth. Going on down on the next page for what we have, the report on the total waste removed. Last year, we had eighty-one point seven-four percent waste that was removed. We require this by our hauler to go ahead and report it, because a lot of jurisdictions don't. They don't measure what it is, the amount of waste that they produce, so to speak. And so our trash hauler is the one that we have tasked with going ahead and quantifying exactly what it is as a part of our contract. Our recycling last year was eighteen point six percent, but this year, you'll see the amount of waste removed is seventy-nine point seven percent. Well, that's an uptick. That's good. That means it's an improvement over the prior year. We had more trash than we had hauled away last year than we did this year. And the recycling from eighteen point six to twenty percent is, again, an increase. In other words, everything's going in the right direction. We're decreasing our waste, and we're increasing our recycling. And you're gonna hear some really exciting news later on today from our synergistic folks, but what's coming up in the future about sustainable initiatives, really, division-wide that we've been doing. We really have some exciting things that are really coming up this fall that hopefully we're gonna be celebrating in a rather large way. As we continue to go down, we look through the protocols and prioritization of our work. Unfortunately, well, we've done a really good job of our safety conditions at work. We've done, we've had a hundred percent compliance with, you know, all of the tornado drills, the lockdown drills, and the fire drills at the beginning of the school year. We do one-third, approximately one-third of all our school, we have sit-down tabletops with our safety and security offices go through that. And folks are actually very, very forward-thinking and forward-leaning in that area. Our principals are doing an outstanding job. We have a few folks that need some reminders because of all the distractions that go on, but they take their safety and security very seriously, as do we. We're starting to get into the reds, you'll see, and that really gets into the area of my utmost concern. I know it's something that's not new to the school board members, and it really has to do with our facilities maintenance, really, the staff and trade members that we have, to the men and women that actually maintain and keep the system running from a maintenance and operating standpoint. I begin to notice this past year that what we've been having, well, as you know, there were over two-hundred-and-fifty-four maintenance personnel. We are considered short, if you will, and that was confirmed by an outside group, FEA at Fairfax, who also, in the Gibson report, it was cited that that, in fact, was proven that we were, in fact, well short of what needed to be. But what I'll tell you is, I'm starting to see some deterioration on some of our systems because of the fact that the type of repairs that we've been doing have really been Band-Aids. And what do I mean by that? By the fact that our folks have been doing such a yeoman's job of getting it up and running. If air conditioning goes out during the hot parts of the school year, we work real fast to try to get those areas climatized and comfortable. Our staffs are amazingly patient and tolerant with us, but this past year, I begin to notice that some of the Band-Aids that we've been putting on have really not been sustained. What I mean by that is that the failure rate is kind of creeping up. And Mike Coughlin's been doing a really good job in our FM area by trying to go ahead and improve on this, but when you look at the statistic that's provided down here, where thirteen point one percent of our work is preventive maintenance, you really don't wanna have, you know, the old eighty-twenty principle. You really wanna have it the other way around. You want it inverted. You want it to be eighty percent preventive and twenty percent reactive. So, but what have we done in that area? We've taken about fifty-six positions and put them on the evening, an evening shift. We've done that with our painters and our structural journey folks. He's gone ahead and converted some other vacancies that we had to try and alleviate or stave off the things I was just alluding to. And one of the things he's done is identify, converted a couple structural positions for a wrapping and insulation position. Well, that may seem like gobbledygook, but the importance of that is, when you think about the wrapping of pipe, the pipe, if it's not properly insulated, gets humidity and moisture, and then you'll have condensation that will drip off. The problem with condensation dripping off is it provides an environment for bacteria and mold and growth and mildew. So by recognizing we had a problem area, we'd been contracting out greatly for that, but we still weren't keeping up with it. He got creative and went ahead and converted one of our structural positions, when it became vacated, to this position to assist in the evening responsiveness to address that. So, anyway, moving on, it really, I can't say enough about FM. I know Dr. Garza's mentioned in the recent budget discussions what we're looking at. Our deferred maintenance program has been snowballing to such an extent that we're over ninety-nine million dollars behind in maintenance repair and replacement work. Then we get into custodial inspections. I know this is, again, Mr. Moon has asked a lot of questions in the past in this area, especially with the Gibson report and our conversion to have the supervisors, the reduction in the number of custodians, but also the increase in the number of supervisors and how that's working out. So far, it's working out pretty darn well. I'm surprised that the feedback, the initial feedback I've been getting, is that folks are appreciative of the fact that we've come up with a standard metric of evaluation, the cleanliness expectations, and that the supervisors not only articulate that, but I use the term, once the cart's in the ditch, they all get in to help it get out of the ditch. So if people are short, the monitors, the people that actually supervise to make sure we're consistent, and some of the work that we're doing is, our techniques are applied properly, and our training is done at the utmost possible level, that these positions actually are responsible for ensuring that that actually is occurring. And so far, we've been having really good feedback on it, and it took us a little while to get all of the positions hired, so I will tell you that was a little delay in the startup. But most folks have been very responsive because our articulation is, we're here to be assistive, not punitive. We're to assist you. Certain building principals had very good relationships with their teams. We said, we're not here to disrupt any symmetry you have going on. We're here just to provide a framework and an expectation that's consistent across the division.
If I might add to that, Jeff, you'll remember that previously, our custodial staff, the principals supervised them. And so it was something to take, we were planning to take off the plate of principals, but also to put that supervision in with managers who have that expertise. You know, there's certain skills around how do you take care, whether it kind of appropriate chemicals or appropriate materials that you need. So I think it was a step in the right direction, and I think, Jeff, you and your team handled that transition really well.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. And so I'll just pretty much summarize. The rest of them talks about transportation and bus runs, and I'm really excited that we're gonna be migrating out of this type of reporting element for this reason, because we use some metrics in here that were tied to state reporting that really, I don't think, spoke to situations. We set up the bell time, delivery schedule. We identified what was late, and we, you know, we're very, we weren't conservative. We were very hard on ourselves about what we considered a late bus. And so therefore, I think the reporting of this is kind of skewed to what the realities actually are for this region. And since I've gone on my fifteen minutes, and I know we have a limited amount of time, I'll just kind of sum it up and say that the data that's associated with this and the charts that are provided really go into a little bit more detail, and the value statements and everything else that we have that's with the attached document go into a lot more, provide a lot more information for you. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them either this time or in follow-up email. So thank you very much.
Do Young?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Plattenberg. Over the weekend, I sent you some questions. I'm not gonna repeat those questions, but since we have to be done by twelve o'clock two, I'll limit my questions to maybe copper. A first, going to page, this is actual report, page twenty-five of the report, looking at the comparison bar graph of reactive versus preventive trend, and I think the notes underneath indicates that in FY two thousand and fifteen, you had to cut twenty-nine positions, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, but the graph only shows two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and four, goes only up to two thousand and fourteen with, even though this is modest increase in the number of hours for both reactive maintenance and preventive maintenance, number of hours have gone up compared to two thousand and twelve. If you see two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, numbers both have gone up. So for two thousand and fifteen, we don't have the data yet, at least board members haven't seen the data. Are you saying that because of the cuts of twenty-nine positions, we should expect to see the numbers to go down for both reactive and maintenance?
That's a very good question, Mr. Moon. No, we don't anticipate that. Some of the creative, I mean intuitively and linear sequentially, my first response would be absolutely, because if we kept doing things the same way, you would expect to be a decrease. But because of the things that I mentioned that we've been doing with the preventive maintenance and the night shift, we actually are seeing that trend continue a little bit, which means there was an opportunity for us to have been doing that all along. Yes, sir.
I understand that, you know, next year's presentation, the format and the content might be different from this year's.
Yes, sir.
But do you think we'll still be able to see those numbers?
Absolutely.
I just wanna see whether numbers, you know, go, you know, continue going up, or, you know, we had, because of position cuts, that we have negative consequences on those numbers.
Yes, sir. We'll definitely, the data that the school board members that will desire, in fact, Susan, Ms. Quinn has mentioned this to us, that, you know, just because we're migrating into a different path, the expectations about some of the data, because it's good, they're good metrics that want to be used, we are to be prepared that we're gonna be reporting back on. So I'll make it a note to make sure that I come back to you next year and let you know exactly how that turns out.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. Just one more question has to do with looking at, you can go to executive summary, A1D1, and the relevant information on the actual report may be on page fifteen.
Mm-hmm. It is.
Page fifteen.
Yes, sir, it is.
I was quite surprised to see for the five-year projection discrepancy from FY two thousand, this is FY two thousand and thirteen versus two thousand and fourteen, dropping from ninety-nine to basically ninety-six. That's a huge drop. Do I understand that you have changed the definition of the five-year projection discrepancy from FY two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, or am I understanding that wrong? Because that's a significant drop.
Yes, Mr. Moon. What we did was, we tried in this graph, we tried articulating the five-year discrepancy. This was one of the concerns that came out, and I believe it was Ms. Schultz had requested that we try to clarify the data in a different light, because I think the conversation was that we were not showing how off we were from a five-year perspective. The problem with that is that in trying to be, in trying to articulate more clearly, it's created more confusion for the reasons why you just mentioned, the question you just asked. The, I think there might be a better way for us to articulate that and perhaps identify that year over year over year, when added together, you can see that the discrepancy over a five-year period, rather than the first year to the fifth year, and then provide what our, what our, what our elements of our math equation are, I think, to make it more clear.
Okay, Mr. Plattenberg, if you could provide in writing whether there has been a change in definition from FY two thousand and thirteen through two thousand and fourteen, because that, again, the three percent drop is a significant, the number-wise, but if you have changed the definition of that discrepancy.
Right.
How to come up with that, then that might explain the reason?
Okay, I'll be glad to provide that in writing, and we'll have Ms. Hollab go ahead and write something up for you. I will tell you, we are seeing, if the general statement is about our enrollment projection and our growth rate, we are seeing a slight contraction. And that is, if that's what you're suggesting, that is so, but we will follow up in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, Mr. Moon's point, so are you saying on the bottom of this second graph, that the blue line, for example, the two thousand and ten, eleven figure, is the five-year projection from the two thousand and five, six CIP?
No.
Where are the five-year projections, then, that Mr. Moon is asking?
Well, that's what I'm gonna do, is I'll go ahead and follow up in writing. I'll give a detailed explanation of that, unless Ms. Hollab wants to provide any other insight. I think it'd be better if I just provided in writing, because that's, the inherent line, some of the confusion. People are looking at that and saying, well, that represents the five-year element, and that's what Mr. Moon had asked about.
But if the one hundred and eighty-three, eight-twenty-nine for the school year of fourteen, fifteen, if that's a five-year projection, that would have to be from the two thousand and ten or nine-ten CIP?
Oh, right. Right.
Is that what you're asking, Mr. Moon?
Is that what you're asking?
Yes. On executive summary, if you look at, if you look at the executive summary, A1D1, it shows for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, I used FY thirteen for that, fiber projection was ninety-nine point one percent. The following year, a drop to ninety point five point nine. That's a significant drop. And I wanna see whether we are using the same definitions in both years, or we have changed.
Unaccompanied minors.
You're correct. So, Mr. Moon, each of those years, the contrast is the five-year prior projection. So as Ms. Schultz indicated, that's why, and then what we did was, we just had a total of each of those projections over the time span, and we divided the actual number based on the projection, and that's how we arrived at approximately ninety-six percent. So that, each of those years is the five-year prior projection contrasted with the actual enrollment.
And I would love to see all the numbers in writing.
Sure.
Because when you look at this, again, page fifteen graph, that's not how the public will see it.
I agree.
And that's not how I will see it from the graph.
I agree, Mr. Moon. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Thank you for this very extensive report. I'm certain that it took many, many staff hours to present this, didn't it? Yes, yes. Okay, and I, in the interest of time, I'm just going to focus on a couple of key things. One is the maintenance that you've pointed out, yet again this year is still a cause of concern. I wonder, have we looked at alternative methods for that, such as contracting out that function?
Yeah, we have looked at that in the past. We are, in fact, we've been talking to some folks about what that would include. The last time that I did an evaluation, thorough evaluation, was, was, was not last year, but the one prior, when I first got here, I'd asked about what those things would cost. And it really came down to contracting out, which we do a lot of contracting out, for a number of different aspects of what we provide for in FM. The costs associated with the labor rate was something where that was really the only discernment that I could find, and also the amount of responsiveness that we could have. So there are some issues with it, but, you know, certainly, it's something that we need to continue looking at, and I'm about due to update that as well, so.
That might be something that we add to our menu of budget items to at least look at. Next is the transportation. You've mentioned for the homeless students and special education students, and in a similar fashion, I wonder if we might take a look at that to see if there might be more efficient and more cost-effective ways of providing transportation for those two populations.
Yes, Ms. Reed. You know, as you know, we provide, not only do we have a myriad of different options with our vans, we also have, we have the short buses, what we refer to it, and we also have the vans, and we also use some private carriers in addition to that. And we do privatize over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars' worth of our annual transportation budget. I will tell you, though, that in looking at it, one of the biggest problems that we've had in this region is providing enough drivers that are qualified and certified. So whenever I have had tasked my transportation folks with going ahead and saying, look, you know, we're the largest publicly owned and operated transport, educational transportation system, I say that that means we need to have other opportunity operational efficiencies, and that means we need to be contracting out. And they come back to me and they say, well, we do. And we also continue to seek for private carriers to supplement our services. And the bottom line is, the way we're structured, they don't want, the ones that have responded to us that are pretty good size, have said that they don't wanna tie up their assets in the way that we need them. It is an opportunity that we're continuing to expand. As you have read that we recently publicized, we do have in the works, working with the connector and utilizing their services that we're gonna be piloting next year with, for five of our high schools. So we are continuing to look at all possible opportunities for improvement and leveraging that burden.
Excellent. And so that might be another area that we could add to the budget menu if it isn't there already, because I know, as you've alluded to, we spend a lot of money transporting various kids to various places. And last but not least, you provided quite the case for articulating a minimum size of schools in here, and so that's clearly a policy issue. And so I guess I wonder, what do you need from the board in order to move that forward, and what would be the impacts on the CIP?
Well, we've already, I mean, there is a school board policy that talks to the size of a facility, and we also, I think, through the work session discussion on that, kind of really went through it, and rather throwaway, about how there wasn't one perfect size at any one perfect time. It does drive the CIP in terms of when we have growth and we see growth in certain regions that we have to take a look at when we determine that a new school's required. So I think, I think it does come out in the CIP on the annual reporting. I do know that we've been working with, Dr. Garza has directed us to go ahead and provide, working with FPAC and our own planning staff, a different framework. So it's more like a, there are set components that are static, and then there are other elements that are dynamic. And the dynamic elements are the ones that are gonna be in the middle, that we report, the CIP and the cash flow that's reported to the county each year. And the other components are really a lot of the historical data and framework that you really have heard through all of our different work sessions, whether it's proffers, but really the whole, what is the CIP from soup to nuts? So I think, I think it currently is accommodated, to answer your question. I think the CIP does accommodate for any trends that we see, any demographic and changing trends. I do know that we have had some challenges with our CIP, and this is gonna be in the next iteration with the workflow. We talked about where the data elements come. Our general education projection numbers are pretty solid, and they're really tight. They're really accurate. Now, somebody can go, okay, well, school by school, you're not accurate in other areas. And then we start peeling deeper into the onion, we find out, well, okay, that's because we have AAP, that's because we have transfers that have been allowed, that's because we have FESEP and special education programs. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna make sure that if we're, if we're really gonna take a broad-scale look at this, and that was the challenge, to really make it transparent, then we're gonna identify all the pieces and parts and come into it. And by breaking it down into those pieces and parts, it's gonna allow us to go ahead and improve our timeline, and that really came. gonna allow us to go ahead and improve our timeline, and that really came as a desire to have the, the hiring portion to be, was it two weeks earlier, or was it a month earlier?
Oh, well over a month earlier.
Well over a month earlier. And what that did was, that made us identify our timelines, the legacy timelines that we had, that we couldn't figure out why they were the times that they were, but they impacted our ability to be accurate when we are inheriting data from other sources.
On this issue, there was a lengthy discussion on size of schools. I think we had it at two different work sessions. It is currently in policy. I think it will come up again as we start to talk about the next iteration of the CIP. Currently, I think a couple of board members expressed some interest in lowering the size, the standard, if you remember the conversations, but, you know, that would, that would have our CIP even go, it would, it would have a significant financial impact on our CIP. But certainly, that's something the board could take up in the coming months as we look at the next iteration.
Okay. Is that enough, Ms. Reed? I have Ms. Strauss next.
Thank you. This very, very detailed report, tremendous amount of information, very grateful for that. A couple of pieces, I appreciate the continued discussion and support for adding capacity for schools when they're renovated, and it is important, I think, that we establish reasonable sizes for schools, but I certainly understand, over time, we've gotta build our schools, there has to be, the schools built big enough, so that we are not pushing our CIP so far out. And, and part of those discussions over the years, it would be great to be able to allow small schools, but operationally, it's very expensive, and then just construction renovation, it just becomes, just too costly. So, I, I agree with the numbers that you have proposed in there, and building to those sizes whenever we're touching a school, that is, I think, clearly the best use of scarce dollars. The, one small piece, we've heard our students come to us and ask about serving trays and cafeterias and recycling and all the rest of that, and I don't know if we have a response for that. I know we've looked at that a number of times, but I know our students are, on the one hand, commendably very interested in, in energy preservation, utility cost, recycling, et cetera. And so, clearly, that, we see our kids come back with us with continued proposals for changing the plastics that we use in our cafeterias. So, I don't know where we are with that.
I think on that issue specifically, and Jeff, you may have something to add to it, but, you know, we're in the, currently in the process of hiring a new director of food service, Food and Nutritious Services. The individual that we're working to, to hire is very innovative.
Okay.
And so, I would imagine that that would be something that, you know, we'd probably wanna solicit his input.
Right, to really address that, because we don't wanna go back to dishwashing machines, and, I mean, we have a cost issue in going back to the olden days and how our cafeterias and kitchens were, were done. But I know our kids will continue to press us to be as environmentally sensitive as possible, and we need to continue to do that. So, the other part, another very small piece, because I hear from parents, we have some schools where parents will get updates as to where the buses are and when they are expected to drop their kids off. We have some schools where that doesn't occur. I have some schools where I will see the messages, you know, bus run three is running 10 minutes late, expect your child to be dropped off at that bus stop 10, 15, 20 minutes late. And we have some schools can do it, some schools that don't, that can't. Where are we with that?
Well, last year, we piloted expansion of some of that notification system, and we're planning on this year to be much more current on that. One of the challenges we had were, within each of the area transportation offices, trying to identify a service to the parents and having them sign up through Blackboard for updates. And what we found was, it's a real popular notion. So, we're trying to figure out how exactly we're gonna be able to staff that component, because it is the way of the future, it's where we should be now.
Parents expect, you know, through GPS to be able to know exactly.
Absolutely. And, and yet, we take our safety and security of our students really seriously, and the location of our buses and so forth, so it's not just an open source type of environment. But again, we still have to be able to staff and maintain from the individual area offices, and that's what our pilot taught us. Our pilot taught us that it was kinda sporting it best for us to be keeping things current, especially when we had some really unfortunate and climate weather days.
Yeah, we learned the hard way that we were, we didn't, we did not have strict and well-articulated expectations as it related to notifying parents, and so, we're streamlining those procedures, and we did that some last year, really shifting that onus from necessarily the school sites, but to the supervisors of those routes, and helping them currently use our kit system, although it's, has its challenges, our current kit system, but helping them be equipped to be able to utilize it without having to communicate or find someone at the school, then to also communicate. So, we're trying to streamline that. We think it's probably best situated with the supervisors over those bus routes to do that.
So, our experience this year, we had, we had some pilot deals with that, so that was really what was defining the boundaries as to, as to what schools or what.
Yeah, we had some elementary schools that were really interested in providing that, and, and like we said, we took the feedback that we got and how successful it was and wasn't at times. I'm gonna try to improve on that.
I think the overarching question is, is the intention this coming school year to expand the pilot, and how much?
It would be, in fact, Ms. Gellner, if you wanna come up here and join me, that's fine, because everything's recorded, but it's the intention to try and go ahead and expand those opportunities, but when I mentioned the staffing piece to make sure that we could keep people notified, I mean, that was kind of challenging at best. Jamie, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Well.
You gotta turn your mic on.
I think Dr. Garza articulated it pretty well. It's really not a pilot, it did go full force this year. It's just that it really is a human, it's a staffing issue in the morning, and it's a training curve in articulating the expectations. And so, we have four area offices, and we have different levels of capacity, really, and, yeah, strengths using the technology. And so, I've been working with training all of them, and, you know, now they know it is a priority, it will be a priority in the fall. So, it really has more to do with.
So, is, is there?
It is, every school has access to it, it's through the keep in touch system.
So, they do, so the capacity?
They do have access to it. The challenge, though, again, our staff had jobs, and we added this. So, we're trying to find a way, and that's why we mentioned the capacity, and, and Dr. Garza's used the term bandwidth. We know it's necessary, so we're providing it out there, but we're trying to see how we can leverage our existing staff to make it functional and serviceable. The worst thing we can do is not provide the level of service of the expectation by saying it out there. And that's why I'm saying, regardless of what anybody says, is we piloted last year, even though it's the capacity.
The bottom line is, we expect for every parent to be notified if their bus is late, or, you know, we need, we need them to know, whether it's at the beginning of the school day or the end of the school day. And so, we're really trying to streamline that, so we can make sure that that expectation's being fulfilled, whether that be from the bus supervisor or the school principal.
To be done. Okay, Ms. Strauss, is that it?
Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay. I would think there would be an app for that, something that a bus driver could, my bus is running 10 minutes behind, and, you know. You don't need to comment. Ms. Hines has, oh, Ms. Evans.
Thanks very much. I very much appreciate the thoroughness of this report, as always. It's, gives us a lot of tremendous information. One of the things, Mr. Plattenberg, that you didn't mention, that is one of your huge initiatives, is the Blueprint for Change. So, I wanna congratulate you on that, even though it, I guess that's still an initiative in progress until the fall. Can we assume that that is going smoothly, the implementation on that?
Yes. Well, again, that's the expectation. We've done a number of things. We're really excited, and it's not just, as you know, it was all of us collectively, working together with the community to get that initiative through. Yeah, we're very, we're very eager and excited about this. We've been, as you know, last year, we went ahead and did a dry run on one of the days, or this year, actually, in, in February, I believe it was, we did a dry run of the initial routes. We identified some opportunities that we need to make some adjustments and have made those. We've been communicating with the police department. One of their initiatives is making sure the parents without children who are in our schools are aware of the changing traffic patterns. We know VDOT is gonna be working with us to put up some of those flashing signs in some of the high-traffic areas about the change. Prior to school, we are working our office, OCCR group, Matt Gelfoyle and so forth, and Marty Smith, we've, we've been discussing with them about how we're gonna communicate and over-communicate the fact that this is a new initiative for this next year. The logistical elements, given the amount of, of the funding for the buses, the additional buses, that was absolutely paramount, and I wanna thank the school board for that. We have had a number of bus drivers go through our training program. We are reaching out also because of this new alignment with the Connector Series, we are reaching out to them, to any of the drivers that don't fit their model, because they can't get enough hours. Well, we want them to come to us. So, we are looking for innovative ways to expand our pool. My biggest concern has always been, and always is each year, about having the number of drivers that I need to be successful at the beginning of the school year. That's why our route supervisors and our, our rangers and our BDs, they go ahead and actually drive buses, and that gets into the staffing component when they're out driving, how can they be responsive in updating late messages? But, yeah, things are going extremely well so far, and I still have to cycle back with the park authority. Was waiting for them to give us our fees for the swim team. As you recall, I did go and have a conversation with them and committed to working through all of the details with them. At the staff level, staff feels that everything's worked out fine. We had already done all the fields and everything else that we used, that was not a problem, the golf courses, tennis courts, et cetera. But the issue was with the indoor swimming pools. And I had been assured by Mr. Bill Kern that that's been worked out, but we're still awaiting to see what the annual charge cost is that they give us. And then I've made a commitment to him that I wanna go back and, and cycle back with their board, just to make sure that they hear it from us and from their staff as well, that we've worked together to resolve all those issues. But, yeah, we're really excited about where we are in this thing, and it's, it's a huge shift. Make no mistake about it, when we talk about the implementation of later high school start time, as you all know painfully well, the first 30 to 45 days of school, with the ads, moves, and changes on transportation routes, fill up your emails and your voicemails. I think this year will be no different, but that's why we're taking every step we possibly can to over-communicate and have elements in place so that we can better articulate with our constituents.
Okay, Ms. Evans, was there anything else?
I just wanted to say that also I see that with the number of early arrivals, that we have nearly a quarter that are arriving early currently, and I, I would assume that next year, we'll see a huge improvement in that because of the change in bell schedules and the, and the end of the false tier. So, I think we'll see, we'll see a big improvement in that, and, and that will be certainly welcome.
Ms. McLaughlin?
While I wanna echo what my colleagues have said about appreciating the extensive amount of work that goes into the report, I want to voice my concern that in a system of our size and the complexity of the issues that are in this report, I'm really struggling with the fact that we're trying to sort of, it almost feels very piecemeal, touching on little bits and pieces that each board member is individually picking up on. It doesn't feel like a very strategic conversation, to be honest. And I, I wanted my colleagues to kind of just think about, as we go forward, and we can talk about this in the next session for governance, but it, it worries me a little bit. I don't feel like some of the conversations, the questions we're having are necessarily high-level school board policy, and I, I think part of it is also just the, the way in which we've structured these things. So, this is not a criticism at all of staff. We've given you a framework, you answer to it, but, you know, I'm reading this, and I would have much preferred the 12 of us to have a more macro-level conversation about, so what are the biggest challenges that are facing us? When I look at this report right now, I really can't tell from the tiniest little minutia to, you know, the greatest level issues here. And I, I think it makes today's conversation, we can pick out the little nuggets of interest, but I don't know how we're being strategic to help Dr. Garza either. So, that's kinda my, my one macro-level comment. The second one is that, Dr. Garza, my request to you and Dr. Lockhart, please ask all of the regional superintendents that if they're not all doing this, that going forward, it would be really helpful for us district board members at minimum, if not all board members, where it's relevant, to be kept apprised of changes and challenges to the capacity and the enrollment in our schools. I'm, I'm concerned that I know of one school in my district where there are capacity challenges happening now, there's some efforts by facilities to try and address it, but as we know, there's facilities efforts, and then there's instruction and program placement there, and sometimes, you know, trying to get those two to work together. But it's, it's very challenging as a board member, if I don't know that things are operationally, operationally happening in, in a building, and especially in our high schools, where we obviously educate a lot of kids. I, I don't think we wanna be surprised as board members, and more importantly, we wanna be able to be supportive of the efforts being made. And, and sometimes, we might be a really great partner in that, as facilities and instruction are all trying to figure out, you know, how do we marry the competing challenges? But I, I'm worried a little bit that that's not understood by all the regional superintendents, and so, those, just, again, being kept apprised. I don't wanna be in the dark when things are happening, and families come to me and say, what's this or that, and I'll say, I have no idea. The other thing is that I, I did really appreciate the section on the elementary school design and capacity, and, you know, it, very great amount of detail and information in that. 18 of our smallest elementary schools, I, I really would like to understand, again, there's not time today, but I, I think there is a strategic need here to be looking at these schools. We know we want to enhance and increase preschool education, and I'm looking at some of these schools where they are under capacity, and so, but then, design capacity versus program capacity, I mean, I realize sometimes it can be a Rubik's Cube, but I almost think we need to really, again, start looking at, if we're serious about wanting to expand pre-K, one of our challenges is the classroom space alone. I think this chart here can be helpful to us in sort of identifying where there's gonna be schools where we are just significantly under-enrolled, and we might be staying that way. Or, again, it might be moving some kids to the neighboring elementary school, and then you can create a preschool magnet that's there, that's got all preschool in the building. I mean, those are just things, when I look at this, that it triggered.
You remember, starting this fall, we'll be taking our CIP and taking that out to the community through all of our regions. We did that this year at Region Three, that was kind of our starting point. So, we will be looking, we have a pretty aggressive and comprehensive boundary process that will start for a good number of the Region Three schools, but we have some similar places where we need to look at boundaries and making sure that we're utilizing our capacity. And that, I believe, is, that has to be a part of the discussion about how we're utilizing these under-enrolled schools, because I know nearby, we have schools that could use some relief. We're gonna have to, so it's not just Region Three, but there are quite a number of other places where we're gonna have to take on some really tough boundary calls to utilize that space. And then certainly, you know, pre-K is one, one thing that we'll have to take up. I will tell you that we're often finding the places where we, in most desperate need for pre-K space is not in the areas where we have the longest list, unfortunately. And of course, we have to staff them too, which is, there's some additional cost to that as well. So, all very good points.
Okay. Okay, is that it, Ms. McLaughlin?
No.
Because we're running short on time.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I'll, I'll wrap it up. Going on something that I think Ms. Strauss was trying to touch on, and we know it was in the Washington Post, and I know some of us have already raised it, the, the pink little serving trays, I think it was Arlington, that, you know, switched to the corn starch or?
Butegradable.
Yeah, and I just, I, if it's not for today. Okay. There we go. We're in the process of purchasing new lunch trays. Steph had previously been researching them. We have to use up the pink trays that we have on hand, but our actual goal is to completely eliminate the use of polystyrene, so not just the trays. We currently have some polystyrene cups and other pieces, so.
So we're working to eliminate them all.
And what, but what's the new product, then?
So the product that we're looking at is a tray that Montgomery County is currently using. The tray that was featured in the article in the New York Times and other places is made for food to be served directly onto the tray. And because many of our food items are currently pre-portioned, this tray made out of another paper, recycled paper product, will allow them to set the current containers of food directly on the tray. And it's sturdy enough to hold the containers of food and milk, and you can balance it with one hand. So we're pretty excited.
Well, that's appreciated because I was working at one of the schools one day and saw the staff come out with the big plastic bag full of those pink trays. And it was just painful watching it going straight into the tray. I know, you've done a great job of explaining how we can burn them and, you know.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Hines.
All right, following up on that, I want to say that I appreciate your taking time at the beginning of your presentation and talking about sustainability, you know, across the board. Because we know that that's not only about the environment, it's also about our costs. So that's great. And that you mentioned 30% of our expenses are related to sustainability somehow. So that's very good news. I had just one question, maybe to kind of follow up on that. When you look at, and it's in the executive summary on page 1, the last one there, A1F1, where we talk, and I'm sorry if I just missed this, but we talk about the total cost of energy. And I think that is, when I looked at the report, I think that's per student? That's the cost of energy per student? I just want to make sure I understand what that means and how it relates to A1C1, which is the KBTU per square foot one. Because I see the cost, it looks like it's going up from last year to this year. So could you explain a little bit about what that is?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, Ms. Hines, is provide that to you in detail in writing because it can get to whether or not our costs or utility costs went up, that can also increase it, our consumption rates. So the seasonal anomalies, I'd like to articulate that a little bit better so I don't miss something if that's all right.
Thank you.
Mr. Press promises to be 30 seconds, and then I have some closing comments.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, great presentation. There was one number that really stood out to me, and that was the preventive maintenance. You know, seeing it in bright red in the executive summary was very informative. But to me, that really stands out because that in and of itself is an obstruction to our learning, the learning of students and our educational mission. Because when we have pipes bursting and AC units breaking and, you know, our schools aren't operating the way they should. So that's very disconcerting for me, and seeing that was very informative. And I hope to bring that to the board to work with over the course of the year. But I'd just like to encourage, you know, board members to think about that as we move forward with capital improvement and looking at facilities changes this year, you know, how our preventive maintenance, you know, how we're essentially taking a reactive stance to maintenance. You know, we're waiting for things to break to fix it, and how that does disturb us or students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. So I have just a couple of specifics. If we could go back to the chart from the actual report, the demographic chart, demographic growth chart. So I recall, Dr. Garza, in the Board of Supervisors' presentation, we talked about an annual growth over five years of 13,171 students. And that may include this coming fall, but I don't see the 13,000 students here. So do you think that it was the projection of the total number of students with the fall? So we had a presentation to the Board of Supervisors about our student growth, and it was 13,171 students. And I just, I don't see it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I'll have to go back and ask staff where we came up with that number. But I'm sure we have some, we have some methodology about why we did that or where that number came from.
Okay, so.
So we'll have to go back.
Just a correlation between what we're showing here and what we're showing there. Two is, I do think, and we do have it as a next step, an explanation of the blue versus red and where we were on the five-year projections from the CIP to here, Mr. Plattenberg. On the summary, A1E1 talks about site selection. But we're not really talking about whether we are actually selecting any sites and where the need is, almost like a heat map. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, a Western Fairfax high school. I still kind of don't know where we are with that versus the CIP with this report. And I guess what I'm asking is, is not that this report be amended, but on a going-forward basis, I think there's got to be, you know, an explanation of where it is the pressure is coming and how we are theoretically addressing it.
I think that should be a part of the CIP, but I understand your point about wanting to.
Okay. And then B262, I guess I have the same point as Ms. Evans. Actually, I guess it's, well, there's two of them there. One is that transportation too early. Last year, it said too early 11%, and this year it was 24%. Why would we, why would that have more than doubled the early arrivals in one calendar year? I'm not understanding that. Because that's a massive increase in the number of students arriving too early.
Ms. Gellner's going to provide you with the answer. But my initial thoughts were, we did have an expansion in some schools that wanted breakfast programs. And that's sort of like a false reporting in some of those. Jamie, you can just turn your mic.
Because to me, that means I don't understand why that would be in green.
Yeah, I don't like our, yeah, I don't like our reporting out, as I kind of mentioned when I skipped over it in the summary of our transportation. We kind of shot ourselves in the foot when we looked at, we set these metrics. And then we didn't provide a context for the framework. Jamie, were you going to add something that's relevant in that? No?
Well, the measure just changed. So if you look at the actual charts, we're showing 25 minutes. And so last year, we showed everybody that was 30 minutes or greater. So now, this is showing you 25 minutes or greater. And we have, you know, that number would have been higher had we done 25 minutes or greater last year. So it's kind of just prepping to show how much of a change it will be next year when we're only arriving 20 minutes before school starts.
And it's also misleading. I mean, so if you see, it's not a true comparison. If you have a change in the time and it's not, the context isn't provided.
So you're saying that had we left it at 30 minutes, that would still probably be about 11%? But that means there's a huge chunk arriving between 25 and 30.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's a good answer. And then similarly, don't go anywhere. B61, on the number of accidents. When you look at the, when you look at the actual report, I don't know on the best practices, you know. And I mean, when we have things like the snow day and we had no, you know, no kids injured, I mean, that's terrific. But you look at these statistics, and I don't know if statistically, the more millions of miles, you know, the likelihood is that the crash rate's going to go up. But it doesn't seem to be proportional when you look at some of the other jurisdictions. So I'm wondering, you know, we don't seem to really have a trend, a downward trend. There was a blip downwards, but there was also a blip upwards. So, you know, is there something discernible? Because crashes are bad. Crashes cost money, crashes impair all staff, crashes injure, you know, capital equipment. They make parents freak out, you know. I mean, this is, you know, this is not a good thing, I got to think. And the goal is to get it to be not so bad.
Right.
But how?
Well, the deal is, you know, different jurisdictions report this, again, in different ways and different formats. We have really an incident report. Whenever a bus scrapes, touches, is involved in anything, it's considered, and there's an accident versus an incident. I think we have an opportunity really to look at things that are considered elevated and non-elevated, much like we're doing in our communication plan and working with Mr. Gilfoyle. But here again, when you look at the number that we've had this past year, actually, it did go up. The year prior, it was less, and I was quite pleased with that. In this region, it's challenging to begin with because of the size of our buses, the length and the width of them. But we do have, you know, again, all of our drivers have to go through recertification. We have recertification training. If they're involved in an accident, they have a lot of elements that they have to go back through through their own training.
And then the last question I have is on the recycling. I know you say we're up on the recycling, which means we're doing better. But there's not, there's no cost figure with that. Is that costing us more money? I mean, I'm thinking that recycling isn't saving us money, it's actually costing us money.
Yeah, I know we've read all that in the, but it's a part of our service provider that we have from the same refuse collection as a part of our recycling. But I'll go ahead and provide you something right.
Yeah, I think there's got to be, I mean, I think we have to understand the cost implications, particularly headed into the next budget. I don't have anything else. So we have next steps. On an association, he's, what the financial component is of the recycling. We missed, we missed.
There was a request that we provide the calculation for how we determine the number of enrollment, the enrollment crease reported to the Board of Supervisors as compared to this one. This one's using a different number of years, so we just need to get that answer.
So the detail on the enrollment projections to the Board of Supervisors versus the OE and the five-year projection numbers, that's what Mr. Moon had asked for. So staff to detail on enrollment projections as reported to the Board of Supervisors versus the OE. Versus what's in the monitoring report, I'm sorry. And. No, and the. And the, well, no, and the detail of the projections on five-year, or the detail on the five-year projections. You're, yeah, two L's on enrollment. And then the other one was on energy costs. Yep, the energy cost per student. Details on the energy cost per student. Anything else? Yes. It's listed, it's listed in the monitoring report. He knows it. Okay, so once again, I have a motion to accept.
Ms. Schultz, I have one more thing.
Oh, okay, Ms. Reed.
And that was a follow-up on the costs associated with maintenance and whether there's another way to do business and the transportation for the homeless and special ed communities. So it's budget information as well as recommendation to add it to the list of budget items to be considered for the cuts.
It's already in there?
And we will have a discussion, a little bit of discussion on that today.
Staff to provide additional information regarding costs.
Associated with specialized transportation.
Yep, that's a good way to say it.
Okay, are we it? Okay, so once again, the motion is to accept the Facilities and Transportation Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. All in favor? It's unanimous? We're, that's it? We're good? Okay, that's the close of this work session. We'll have a two-minute break in between. We are four minutes off of a one-hour schedule. So we're going to try to make that up in the next session on governance.
Ted?
Are you?